Okay, it's 5:30, it's time to call the meeting to order. Please put us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do either one of you gentlemen have anything they'd like to have removed from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
That's our mission to approve the consent agenda. So...
We need a witness to do that the other way. No items are removed. No items are removed, you're good.
Okay. And under special activities, we have an oath of office for Ezra Solven as firefighter EMT. If there's a little cheat sheet if you want to read along, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Ezra Solven.
Do you solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Required as a firefighter EMT of Clear Creek Fire District?
Required as a firefighter EMT for Clear Creek Fire District.
Clear Creek Township, Warren County, State of Ohio?
Uh, Warren County and the State of Ohio.
To which office I have been appointed?
To which office I have been appointed.
According to the law and the best of my ability?
According to the law and the best of my ability.
During continuance of my lawful employment.
During continuance of my lawful employment.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations. Good evening. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Can I get a little? Go ahead. Does he make the other part? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys are very nice.
Thank you.
You guys are very nice.
You guys can stay here all day.
Thanks.
One for one.
One for one trade.
Thanks for coming later.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 5629, a resolution to approve the model to deny the request by Springboro Development Company LLC agent for property owners for Stage Two preliminary site plan review for residential plan unit development, RPUD, for Clear Creek Heights subdivision and the Spentwood Street.
So, we had, like I said, a larger crowd, did not push the TV back so far on the dance again to have my presentation cleaned up, so you're going to be able to say I can't see it, hopefully?
You can use full material on the drop box.
Yes. Hopefully, we're looking at the property that is hatched and we are west, uh, 105 points, north of State Route 73 and 1176 State Route 73, also identified by 0407 200 streets, 04 personal ID. So, there's been several middles, starting in August and then it was in October and we're seeing, I remember some middles and we get to the draft trustee resolution, there's references for certain things to go there and maybe the additions will have to be stated in the building building for that in a moment. So, let's look at what we're looking at proceeding as a PUD request. Ultimately, we're looking at a 102 acre tract that has 140 acres of residential road and road right of way, updated on 6th, we have 31.9 acres of open space, 54.5 acres of residential lots, 122 lots or purpose stage 1, 122 of those are 95 foot width lots, 10 are 105 foot width lots. This exhibit that we're looking at is labeled with A, B, C and the like, that is showing what street names at this point in time are just orders, just to show how people are being on off confused. So, it's off of State Route 73, we have a split boulevard which is A which goes to a roundabout continuing to north, and then allows F to come off which is a loop road and back to A, and then it will terminate on C. B, starting along the western, is a cul-de-sac which will allow steeplechase to get in, continue to go south, will come to the roundabout, continue to go east, and then will go to go north, will then allow access to north to a boulevard, and then continue north. E is a current stub to the Dunlop property, so the loop road is connecting at this point in time with this partial stub to that undeveloped lane, and then it goes to north to C. C connects B, A, and then cul-de-sac. So, in one subdivision, multiple types of street networks, ultimately, there's some connectivity that will allow indigenous government city to township to back again for the connectivity requirements of subdivision regulations, both for one county and city chamber. Typical lots, just a brief discussion, and we'll get into actually looking at some lots. Two different lot styles were proposed in stage one, at that point in time you had a 95 foot width lot and 105 foot width lot. Discussion that occurred during the zoning commission and receiving is where should you measure the width? Typically zoning measures that at frontage, however, requests that to be measured at the minimum yard because of the curvature of the roads, and we'll get into looking at some of those in just a minute. So, I go to the next exhibits that pop up, got some colors, things, also only the purple outline along the loop road is the 105 foot width lots. And we'll see if there's five mini circles of purple, those lots do not need the minimum 100 foot width at the frontage, but they do at minimum front yard setback. So, that is why they would call it out. Ultimately, within this classification, 105 foot lots, typical lot size of .3615, 15,000 square feet. There's a total of three lots that are between .363 and .499 acres, the rest are above a half acre lot size, meaning seven more points. To look at the remaining lots, those are the 122 lots that are 95 foot, one has a blue dot, we'll get to that in a moment, that's currently on this exhibit, paint handle is going to be reconfigured at that moment, but what you're seeing is all of these orange dots, or orange circles, that are lots that do not meet the frontage because of the curvature of the roads, but they do meet it at the minimum front yard setback. So, in zoning commission, we've looked at this, they decided to step back, minimum setback with this public location for the width to be measured. This body hill is something that should be looked at, there's no modifications in the conditions. We're looking at lot size, typical lot size is specified at .327, which is 14,250 square foot lot. There's 103 lots that exist between .327 and .499 acres, so they're 19 of about a half acre in lots size. Alright, so let's look at the update that came through in October 6th, this is the blue dot for the, what was a paint handle and that will be called irregular locks, it has the kind of road frontage at the setback, it's going to be oriented so it is in line with the rest of these homes, so actually the front yard that is coming from the east balcony. The reason they took it out of the paint handle and put it into irregular locks, there's been updates in the Warren County subdivision regulations, and they don't want, they don't want any of the homeowners, not wanting to have paint noodles if you think of a cul-de-sac unless you go through a various process, instead of having additional bureaucratic stuff, which is to reconfigure the lots, so you do not have to go through that process. Alright, so start looking at what a home's going to look like in the stage two, there's multiple some middles to put forth for the elevation, I just chose one as an example, if it was going forward, degrees. There was also specifications of floor plans for first and second floor. At the October 6th meeting, it was specified that the minimum lot, to the minimum house size would be 1,800 square feet. These exhibits did not specify the information, but that was an update, that was put forth as condition, depending upon. In the PUD, also looking at open spaces that would be used, so there are eight different open space lots that have different functions for the PUD. Open space lot one is going to be west of the entrance, has both a streetscape buffer to be parallel to State Route 73, provides some mounds and trees, farms, will build stormwater and aesthetics of the fountain, and it will be a perimeter buffer along the western boundary all the way up behind the lots for 15 foot width to steeplechase drive. Open space two is an immediate image, so to speak, of what one is, is the mounding, has the street trees, has the pond, and then it has on the eastern boundary to North Road Boulevard, 15 foot perimeter buffer. Open space three is inside of the loop road, which will have some trees, so it's going to be a area. Four is along the northern boundary, has two ponds proposed, and then will have perimeter buffer, north of steeplechase, and then wraps around and goes to the proposed connections and end line structure. Five is just the between Dunlop street sub and North Close Boulevards sub, it's also 15 foot width. Six is a connection between two road networks, remember concept plan, this used to be the road to North Close, and the first concept went all the way into State Route 73, this is a way to defer traffic differently, so to speak, through that subdivision, but then give a pedestrian access between those spaces. What's unique about lot six is it's going to be in two different phases, so half of it will be done in phase two, the other half will pass through that in a moment. Seven is inside of the roundabouts, and at this point in time, there is a plan for a clock tower, at this point, this concept has a photo, but we don't have the information. Few things that were not provided in deep detail in the zoning commission put forth has future stage three requirements, that information should be brought back, something that this body desires to look at, then it would be either table in tonight for that information, or have some more specific information brought forward to you, so that they can be forward. Finally, then we have eight, which is boulevard, and at this point in time, there's trees and just a bit of a split boulevard. Can just talk about the boulevard, at this point in time, this is where the applicant proposes to have the access, proposes to have everything, this is subject change based upon the stage three, kind of the current course at this point in time, that we do not require the traffic study and all compliance with Springboro until the stage three, with the stage two, so they're sitting in content, this is where things can be, they may have the preliminary, this is where I think the refinement's going to be, but ultimately, that final makeshift that used to left, and they also modify their design of that boulevard, so things to be aware of, as we proceed. We're looking at the next exhibit, ultimately, is the intent of what the fountain's going to look like, so fountain can be, pond's requirement of the, at this point in time, see if there's a fountain, but the specifics are simply to come forward. The next exhibit, we're looking at six, being split between two phases, seven being the clock tower, isn't at the bottom, you're seeing clock tower in relation to human scales, to see where things are, but it's yet to be refined, that would be part of the stage three, the entrance for their signage, getting along each two areas, and then the sidewalk, it's a continuation. The next exhibit that we're looking at is lot, open space lot three, this is the loop road, and if I heard it, it's a 195 foot width lot, I'm seriously wondering what they expect to have within that open space. Trees, good. Alright, so this exhibit gets a little funky, but we're going to look through, comes in line, this is really phasing, I mean, so when they were forward in October with the zoning commission, they made this middle in August that showed two phases, early during the zoning commission, said they wanted to change to a three phase, so as part of the requirement for this middle was to show us how they wanted to split things up. So, ultimately, what we're looking at with today's schedule is three phases, the first phase is going to take in all of the frontage, State Route 73, and all of the improvements required there, and then we'll go out, take in a section of pond of open space lot four, and then everything the rest. Comprised of 52 double lots, that can have the connection to State Route 73, going to steeplechase drive, the western complete perimeter buffer will be in place, the complete streetscape buffer will be put in place, the eastern will wait until future phase, and we'll have the open space of 378 in place. The second phase, they're taking the existing space to the north, along with the cul-de-sac of the street network, and will take in partial of six, that's comprised of 44 lots. So, we start looking at lot count, after the second phase, 96 lots are given to the lots. The reason I bring this up, there's some aesthetics that are put in place for amenities and the like, in which the zoning commission put forth thresholds, so, you know, whether you have to have your connection to steeplechase drive, and you have to have amenities in place, those things, so just saying where we're coming on lots. Phase three then is the final phase, which is put in street sub to Dunlop property, connection to North Close Boulevard, and then the new open space perimeter buffers. So, on this one before the zoning commission, we shall prior to that meeting to the city of Springboro, see what comments they have regarding the design and review, and since they have not received true quote-unquote construction designs, and if the project's not yet met that stage of development, I would do is put forth four expectations. Those expectations about sanitary sewer and traffic studies and the like, have been integrated into your conditions, and this will be for one county regional plan, they had 12 conditions that they specified should exist, and of those, number seven is looking at counts that I referred to earlier, eight had an odds expectation of a pond for a street, this is actually building a street, which is something that, if we go back to the 60s, we did, we've not done that, it's been decades, so, a little odds that that was put forth, the zoning commission has taken that out of your draft, and then sidewalks were also required along State Route 73 by one county regional plan, and the zoning commission thought that was not put in the expectation of the PUD, since it's not currently in the city of Springboro along State Route 73, sidewalks are connected here with the internal road network, going from Millfield and going to steeplechase drive, it's an internal street sidewalk that will allow you to get there more efficiently than going back out to sidewalks in the west. Ultimately, this discussion with the applicant, their desire to have trail network, you know, within the open space, at this point in time, there's not been a similar form of trail, so the open space is just open space at this point in time. So, I've been talking to just like probably more than once one here, but I got a couple more things today, that we'll put into the applicant. Ultimately, on this one before the zoning commission, two conditions needed to be addressed prior to coming to the trustee. First one is dealing with phasing, which is done, the second is the last edition of the first, using what's sanitary sewer, it's something that the applicant can speak about in the union language, what I've been told, seeing as there is an agreement, but I'm not yet seen that final agreement, to know if that's something that I would approve as a condition, or if it's something that needs further refinement based upon the law director. And then, there are things that were set forth as stage three, so if you want more information on ponds, mounds, fountains, and a clock tower, that would be something that you would say, I need to have that information as part of the stage two requirement, that you can be shown at this future date, or to comfortable with those details, and then here everybody's own information, then it's currently set up in that format. When you look through the current documents, eight is going to need to be modified because of this middle that was made in November regarding the phasing. Nine, comfortable with 99 lots, so if the applicant's still comfortable with 99 lots for all the amenities to be installed, that's a number that may be tweaked, and 11, 114th to have the final connection, that number may be quick based upon the new page, and you have an additional concern regarding the aesthetics of the architecture and the like, that is something that the zoning commission looked at and said, based upon the 18, that the materials, in general sense, being all exterior materials, being natural, including brickstone, hardy plank, that was sufficient for them, the concrete that was sufficient, and then the condition that on majority of homes were built in order allowing buyers to choose specific elevations, although it's a non repetitive policy, 15 would ensure that no two similar homes are built side by side. So, that is their commitment to aesthetics, I know, we've had ups and downs in regards to what trustees want to see in regards to different PUDs based upon their history, and this is where this is at, if you want to have more discussion about the architecture review, or if you want to establish a particular review committee for that, that would be something we need to have further discussion. And then 21, since there was modification of the paint handle, there was a slight tweak of acreage that went out of open space into lots, that is still a 30% required by the state law. And 22 is what I did before I did this whole discussion, including the applicant's argument. So, with that, any questions of the body before turning it over to the applicant?
Josh, stop.
Unfortunately, the PUDs do accumulate a lot of paperwork, and part of what sometimes occurs is that as you go through this, then you'll get a final of everything that sticks. In this case, we have three different reference points, it's not uncommon, sometimes when you're doing a final, but you want to make sure things are there, if that is a requirement from the commission or trustees, that you need to get a key to the document, this depends on the document that comes with the reference point for stage three in the future. But either way, I can work with you.
Jeff, I have one technical question.
Yeah?
With regard to the minimum lot frontage requirement?
Yeah.
Have we discussed with the applicant, if on a lot that is curved and not a, so to speak, a penthouse lot, will a lot frontage measured at the minimum front yard setback be measured on a plane through the court?
That's a good question, I'm not asked that specifically as such, so...
There's probably an understanding.
Yeah, we'll answer which way you're going.
Okay.
Is there a guess as to the timing of the phase one, phase two, phase three?
Great question for the applicant, at this point in time, I don't know the total buildout timing, but I suspect they can provide additional information.
Okay. Okay. Right, here's one we have.
Yes.
Let's chat, anything or anything? If you would state your name.
Yep, Braden Kaiser, Springboro Development Company, 562 North Main Street, Springboro, Ohio, 45066. So, I'm going to touch on a few items, I'm going to bring my engineer to touch on the stuff that I cannot be clearly on. So, first, as far as phasing goes, the plan right now is phase one is going to be starting early 2026, phase two is going to be starting late 2027, and phase three is going to be starting late 2028. Then the easement, so, I've been working with the neighboring property owner, we do have a, we've been working in good faith, and we do have a pretty good understanding on the terms of the easement. We have also been working with the current property owners, they do still have estate in the property, so we sent over the terms that Mr. Dunlop and I have discussed, and we feel like there's enough consideration that Mr. Dunlop is giving, as well as Springboro Development Company is giving for the phasing of the lots, to make the current property owner feel good about the granting of the easement. We are still waiting to hear from that ownership group, it is a larger ownership group, so once we hear from them, we'll relay that information, but Mr. Dunlop and I, we've been speaking quite often, and we feel like, especially in the last few weeks, we have a pretty good understanding of the granting of that easement. As far as the easement and the phasing goes, is there any questions that you guys have to read on those two subjects?
So, the phasing, you know, I'm, easement condition concerns me a little bit, because that is a private matter for those folks to work out, I'm not a big fan of that being in the condition, to be quite frankly.
Number 22?
Number 22. Now, again, what they work out, what they do privately, that's what they work out, and that's what we do privately.
However, if we leave that in there, that's just another check, isn't it?
It is, but my concern is the, and if they're going to agree to, they can agree to whatever they agree to, and we're not going to give away that, but my concern is approving a property based on a private agreement impacting somebody else's property, and us making a determination based on that, that's my concern, quite frankly.
Would you feel better if there was an agreement in place that they could present to us, if we left it at?
What I don't want is this being a condition, and then they don't work out an agreement, and then one of them comes back and sues us because we imposed a condition that they talked about they were willing to do, and then all of a sudden, because of negotiations, it goes back, that they don't get something worked out. And I'm not to say that it's not going to, it's not going to puke anybody here, I'm sure they're working in favor, that's not at all, I'm saying I'm paid to worry about the 2% scenario, and that's what I'm worried about, the 2% scenario.
You didn't answer my question, if that's, you did turn this.
Well, I...
If they had an agreement in place, if we table this tonight, and they have an agreement in place in a month.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't that make that go away?
I don't like that condition being in there.
How does that not make it go away, that agreement?
Well, if you're going to get, if part of the agreement, they're agreeing not to challenge this decision, okay, but just because they have a private agreement, it doesn't mean, and I assume they would need a one who would challenge it, but I don't think that is a proper condition to impose something on private property, for someone else's property, that they're not coming to you about, the other property is not part of this determination. That's the issue.
With that being said, part of the discussion that Mr. Dunlop and I have had is, we do have a good, pretty good working relationship, there is another property owner that that state here, that we're trying to also make sure that they feel comfortable in the process as well, which again, we feel like Mr. Dunlop's offering up consideration and working through the process with us, and that, we don't see that being an issue, but we do want to respect him.
Yeah, well, and if there is an agreement, and we, you know, all three parties seem to be involved in that agreement, of which, at this point, we can't do that.
Well, I mean, I think what you have to do is look at the conditions that are required in a stage two PUD, and say that lack of that agreement reflects that, not because you want this particular development based on another property, what's going on on the other property, that's my concern.
Well, we could just remove...
Yeah, we could just remove 22, because again, my understanding is that if the private parties work out the agreement, and...
I need to have that information as far as the stage three requirement that you can be shown at this future date or to comfortable with those details, so we think everybody's own information, but it's currently set up in that format. When you look through the current documents, eight is going to need to be modified because of this middle that was made in November regarding the phase. Nine, comfortable with nine and under lots, so the applicant's still comfortable with nine and under lots for all the amenities to be installed, that's a number that may each week, on eleven, on the fourteenth to have the final connection, that number may be quick based upon the new page, and we had an additional concern regarding the aesthetics of the architecture and the light, that is something that the zoning commission looked at and said, based upon eighteen, that the materials, in general sense, being all exterior materials, to be natural, including brickstone, already planned, that was sufficient for them, they couldn't ensure it was sufficient, and then the condition that on the majority of homes were built in order allowing buyers to choose specific elevations and all going to maintain a non repetitive policy, fifteen would ensure that no two similar homes are built side by side. So that is their commitment to aesthetics, I know we've had ups and downs in regards to what trustees want to see with regards to different P U D's based upon their history, and this is where this was at, if you want to have more discussion about the architecture review, or if you want to establish our particular review committee for that, that'd be something we can have further discussion. And then twenty-one, since there was modification of the paint handle, there was a slight tweak of acreage that went out of open space into lots, but it's still up to thirty percent required by the state law. And twenty-two is what I did before I did this whole discussion, including the applicant's argument. So with that, any questions of the body before turning it over to the applicant? Unfortunately, the P U D's do accumulate a lot of paperwork, and part of what sometimes occurs is that as you go through this, then you'll get a final of everything that sticks. In this case, we have three different reference points, it's not uncommon, sometimes when you're doing a final, but you want to make sure things are there, that is a requirement from zoning commission and trustees, that you need to get a key to the document, this depends document, that kind of the reference point for stage three in the future. But either way, I can work with you.
Jeff, I have one technical question. With regard to the minimum lot from the requirement, have we discussed with the applicant if on a lot that is curved and not a, so to speak, a penthouse lot, will a lot frontage measured at the minimum front yard setback be measured on a plane through the court?
That's a good question, I'm not asked that specifically as such, so.
There's probably an understanding.
Yeah, we'll answer which way you're.
Is there an S? Is there a timing of the phase one, phase two, phase three?
Great question for the applicant, as it's playing time, I don't know the total buildout timing, but I suspect we'll take some additional information.
Okay.
All right, now.
Okay.
Right, here's from the applicant.
Yes.
Does she have anything to raise to the people? If you would state your name.
Yep, Braden Kaiser, Springbrough Development Company, five sixty-two North Main Street, Springbrough, Ohio, four five zero six six. So I'm going to touch on a few items, I'm going to bring my engineer to touch on the stuff that I cannot be clearly on. So first, as far as phasing goes, the plan right now is phase one is going to be starting early twenty twenty-six, phase two is going to be starting late twenty twenty-seven, and phase three is going to be starting late twenty twenty-eight. Then the easement, so I've been working with the neighboring property owner, we do have a, we've been working in good faith, and we do have a pretty good understanding on the terms of the easement. We have also been working with the current property owners, they do still have a stake in the property. So we sent over the terms that Mr. Gunlock and I have discussed, and we feel like there's enough consideration that Mr. Gunlock is giving, as well as Springbrough Development Company is giving for the phasing of the lot, to make the current property owner feel good about the granting of the easement. We are still waiting to hear from that ownership group, it is a larger ownership group, so once we hear from them, we'll relay that information. But Mr. Gunlock and I, we've been speaking quite often, and we feel like, especially in the last few weeks, we have a pretty good understanding of the granting of that easement. As far as the easement and the phasing goes, is there any questions that you guys have to read on those two subjects?
So the phasing, you know, I'm, easement condition concerns me a little bit, because that is a private matter for those folks to work out, I'm not a big fan of that being in the condition, to be quite frankly.
Number twenty-two?
Number twenty-two. Now again, what they work out, what they do privately, that's what they work out, and that's what we do privately.
However, if we leave that in there, that's just another check, isn't it?
It is, but my concern is, is the, and if they're going to agree to, they can agree to whatever they agree to, as we're not going to give away that, but my concern is approving a property based on a private agreement impacting somebody else's property, and us making a determination based on that, that's my concern, quite frankly.
Would you feel better if there was an agreement in place that they could present to us, if we left it in?
What I don't want is this being a condition, and then they don't work out an agreement, and then one of them comes back and sues us because we imposed a condition that they talked about they were willing to do, and then all of a sudden, because of negotiations, it goes back, that they don't get something worked out. And I'm not to say that it's not going to, it's not going to puke anybody here, I'm sure they're working in good faith, that's not at all, I'm saying I'm paid to worry about the two percent scenario, and that's what I'm worried about, the two percent scenario.
You didn't answer my question, if that's, you have a turn, Steve.
Well, I.
If they had an agreement in place, if we table this tonight, and they have an agreement in place in a month.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't that make that go away?
I don't like that condition being in there.
How does that not make it go away, that agreement?
Well, if you're going to get, if part of the agreement, they're agreeing not to challenge this decision, okay, but just because they have a private agreement, it doesn't mean, and I assume they would need a one who would challenge it, but I don't think that is a proper condition to impose something on private property for someone else's property that they're not coming to about. The other property is not part of this determination. That's the issue.
With that being said, part of the discussion that Mr. Gunlock and I have had is, we do have a good, pretty good working relationship, there is another property owner that that stake here, that we're trying to also make sure that they feel comfortable in the process as well. Which again, we feel like Mr. Gunlock's offering enough consideration and working through the process with us, and that we don't see that being an issue, but we do want to respect him.
Yeah, well, and if there is an agreement, and we, all three parties seem to be involved in that agreement, of which, at this point, we can't do that.
Well, I mean, I think what you have to do is look at the conditions that are required on a stage two P U D, and say that lack of that agreement reflects that, not because you want this particular development based on another property, what's going on on the other property, that's my concern.
Well, we could just remove.
Yeah, just remove twenty-two. Because again, my understanding is that if the private parties work out the agreement, and one of them doesn't abide by that, well, they'll take care of that. What I don't want us to do is get in the middle, based on our zoning conditions, of that private agreement. I understand that. And again, I'm not suggesting they won't work it all out and be happy with each other for the next fifty years, like I said, I got to worry about the two percent scenario.
Well, if there's no more questions on the easement or the phasing, I'm going to bring up my engineer to talk about the engineering process.
Good evening, my name is John, there with Thayer Becker, just two quick items, one on the TRAPSCA impact study, Mr. Palmer alluded to, we have met with the city of Springbrough, staff and their consultant engineer, who scoped the study that they're going to require for that access, and pending approval tonight, we'll begin the work to prepare that TRAPSCA impact study, so that's where that sits as of today. And then regarding the lot frontage, the way that we have measured it in the plan, that's on the board this evening, is a straight line distance measured tangent to the building setback, so if you were to place a building at the immediate setback, that width of the front wall, basically, would be how that's measured. It matches what the four K rural zoning was measured as. Not here for any other. Any related questions, Jeff?
Not this time. You guys have any questions from the applicant? Is there anyone else in the audience that has questions or comments they'd like to make about this?
My name's Michael Johnson, two seventy-seven Triple Crown Circle, Richard Run. I'm glad to see that the impact study is going to be done, because that's one of the major concerns of a lot of the people that have been here over the past three sessions. Being in a smaller neighborhood, we feel like we're going to get overrun with cars coming from that larger neighborhood, and then we also have a large neighborhood that's being developed south by the Five Points, which is a pretty massive one, and really the only place that they're going to be able to empty your car is that, is to get on State Rock Seventy-three, because everything else is going rural. Just a concern for all of us. I do have a petition here that was signed by most of the residents, and Richard Run would like to present to the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm David Marshall, thirty-five, twenty-seven Third Road, Oglest, Ohio, and I'm here with the Gunlock family. And I do want to talk about the easement, okay? The easement is not an agreement between private parties. It is for the dedication of a public utility easement. Our stance has been, we want to ensure that easement gets dedicated, not that there is an agreement to have an easement between two private parties. In so doing, it's much like planning for roadway, you require roadways be stubbed to adjacent properties, that impacts adjacent properties. So we're asking that you view this as an easement to ensure sewer gets extended to an adjacent property. The agreement and the easement that we're working on is, is a public easement to the city of Springbrough, not between the parties. Now, what we have been working on is an agreement to facilitate how that easement gets recorded. And as late as this afternoon, we've been going back and forth with terms, and I think we have a verbal agreement in place, that with the recording in the first plaque, the easement would be recorded. There would be a five-year moratorium placed voluntarily on Archie Property Lane, or the painted lane, and there would be a monetary escrow put in place for the additional cost that the developer would incur, incur to extend that. So we would ask that, say either the condition stay in place for the public good of the township, that it's not a private easement, if a public easement, like public road right, or, you know, that you table it until we can produce an agreed, agreement between the parties and get the trustees comfortable.
Okay, thank you. I don't understand why, I don't know what else there is to say. We've got, as I understand it, what is being asked is, maybe the applicant can tell me I'm wrong, but the applicant proposed something, and it works with our P U D conditions, and then the neighboring property owner said essentially, that's great, but design it as sewer, so it works for our property, so we don't have to incur additional increased costs of the development. Is that inaccurate, what I've said?
Um, yes.
Okay, well, I was asking this, gentlemen, if that's okay.
Um, yeah, it is, it is inaccurate. Our request was to design the sewer, which is a public utility, to service the public at such a depth that it would be able to sewer this property, okay?
Which property?
The, um, Crossley property, probably all the street property.
Property owned by Mr. Gunlock?
Yes.
Right, not the property that's here for the application?
Now, correct.
Okay.
However, this is, this is, if it is not planned accordingly and appropriately at this point, that property never gets sewed. It is within the Richard Run Sewer District, and is entitled to have sewer through the district. It is incumbent upon the public to ensure that the public benefits from the construction and protect.
Interests.
Our interest, correct, to sewer the site. Now, what's happened in the past is they ran to the sewer, to the property at five-foot depth, that's not usable. City of Springbrough will not allow a lift station to pump into it, so it needs to be designed such that the public benefits from the installation of the sewer, and not just this property that's before you. It is a public utility, a public utility easement, it's not a private easement between the parties, which is, which is a very different type of thing. Um, okay, as an aside, when at One Dean Creek, we were required to keep the sewer deep enough to go from Soulful Oil Road all the way to the other side of that five, because it benefited the public. It would have benefited the developer a whole lot more if the sewer was a lot higher. So, but we were required to have it at that, that's all we're asking, the same treatment.
Can I make a comment? You know, the other aspect of this is, is it gives another access point where people can leave and go into those plaques. Otherwise, I think the traffic study will show that too much traffic going down Seventy-three and too many cars emptying into that, so there's another consideration to take in mind.
Thank you.
So maybe I'll add one point of clarification on the sewer easement.
Thanks.
If you could just hand up, like, just a handout on the sheet. So from a topography standpoint, this is approximately the high point of the property, so the land falls generally from here to the north. So sewer service for this portion of the property comes from Steeple Chase and round into this northeast corner. Our original submitter showed sanitary sewer ending in this cul-de-sac here, and sanitary sewer stubbing at this street stub to what is the neighboring property in discussion. So the ask at the zoning commission hearing was to deepen the sewer from this point through here, and then provide an easement to that adjoining property, so that instead of a sewer stub here, which is higher in elevation than the Gunlock property, being asked here, which is lower in topography, as Mr. Marshall alluded to, provides a greater area of sanitary sewer service in that adjoining property. So, only quite a clarification on that.
So they have the ability to sewer, they just, they would have to do it at a different place if that wasn't the condition, right? They just have to, that other place should be pointed out?
And as far as I understand it, the gravity area that they just see from that stub is greatly reduced in area versus where they're at, this is the one where sewer service area.
Or which benefits their property?
As far as I understand it.
Thank you. Or, I don't, it's not my hearing, I'm sorry, that's what I wanted to hear, or need to hear.
My name's Andrew Gunlock, eighty-two fifty-three Crossing Road, Springbrough, Ohio. It's my understanding, and again, I'm not an engineer, but if you bring the sanitary sewer to where it was originally proposed, the amount of homes that would one day be able to be served by that sewer, when we say greatly reduced, it'd be dropped to seven, eight maybe, but if you move it down to where we're requesting it for the benefit of the public good, the entire plot would be able to be serviced. And we're paying for that additional incurred cost by developer, rather than the public. Thank you.
My name is Chris Woodhill, I'm a big engineer, and I think I know you all. I still got a problem. I want to know what you're gonna need.
Oh, well, wait, wait, wait. We're in the middle of a public hearing now, so you can come back up after the public hearing's over and talk about your easement.
Well, it's not only an easement, I meant this guy, actually, we'd have him, Mr. Steve Woodhill.
Right, but now's not, now's not the time to do that.
There ain't no time to do it with you, Ed, I know that.
After the public hearing's over, after the public hearing's over, you can come back up and we'll talk about.
Ain't nothing wrong with that. I know that, and I don't know where it really is, because I told you, the mayor would get hold this down, but it's just.
We'll have you back up in public comments.
Yeah, well.
Public comments. Any other questions or comments? I think that we should have the agreement.
I would feel better with that, yeah.
To have an agreement in place between the three prop, the three entities, before we approve this, actually, we could do it, we could probably do it in, we do it in phase three.
Well, you as the trustees only see phase two, phase three only does the zoning condition, so if you're willing to see it, despite you need to see it, then despite you need to.
Do it here.
Do it at this part of the process.
That's really my suggestion, since everybody's here, is how long do they, if they need to put it together and paper it up?
Yeah. Well, so if you only have the two parties, myself and Mr. Gunlock and Andrew, we could have the thing buttoned up, we could have had it buttoned up today. I feel like we are in a pretty good place. That being said, I do not want to answer for the wrong family.
Right, no, that's what, that's.
Right, so I don't know, it's a lot of, it's seven total owners, spouses have to sign off on it, so it's not something I can guarantee to the body that's going to be done in the next month. I believe that if we can push it far enough along, I think we can get there, but as of right now, I don't want to promise something that I can't withhold.
Well, I think we'd be better off to table this than, and let you guys put that agreement together and bring that back to us.
Do you know when the tabling we're going to, because we do have, we just have contract restraints with the current property owner that we're trying to work through as well?
I think that's a few of them, trying to get a date specific so they can establish.
We can, I couldn't hit that right now.
As quickly as you can get it done.
All right.
The next available property.
All right, good.
For my advantage point, it's coming back, this is a specific thing that needs to come back, so if it comes back, it gets back on.
Right.
But if you want a date specific that we're coming back, we have two meetings a month.
Okay.
We have an evening meeting, which is the second Monday of the month, or Monday of the morning meeting.
Okay.
So if either of those work, I want to speak to the information.
Yeah, I can, I can leave the ask.
Yeah, I mean, if you put it as a, if I'm reading where we're going, anyway, to table it, based upon getting this information, once that information comes, I'll tell the parties that are here this evening, okay, this is coming forward, this is when we're coming back, that type of thing.
Number twenty-fourth, December eighth, and December twenty-seventh, those are our last.
Those are our last ones, the twenty-twenty?
Okay, I can't answer that right now, but I can, yeah, we can get back to that.
Well, if I could, since you're up here, do you have any issues with the current draft with regards to the amenity and the take down of lots, with regards to when you have to have everything in place?
You mean with the phasing?
Yeah, those work fine with your pace.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure there wasn't a hiccup that occurred that we need a month.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, at this point, then, I'd like to entertain the motion to table this, to a future date, to determine when it is occupied. Mr. Woodhill.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys. Keep notes updated on Facebook and on our website.
Go ahead, any other questions, fire away.
Are there any other items on the feedback, so so we can, so just essentially the agreement?
Yeah.
And if we get the agreement, we're going to report. Right.
Yes, I wanted to clarify that, that was the issue, I'm thinking about the others, that they have nothing else, and that's the only way to be brought back.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Can I still ask a question?
Can you put that back up? I'm Terry, you're Mark Gunlock, two seventy-seven Triple Crown Circle, and I could not hear from the former about the aqua or green dot that was from my, are you showing the last picture, your last slide?
Um, the blue dot, the blue dot was a, was a paint handle lot, and it's now called an irregular lot, so it'll have more road frontage, but it'll still be oriented as the rest of the street network, so when you drive down the street, it'll always be facing east, that will be the same configuration.
So is it a, is it a lot that has a driveway that goes behind a front house, or no? There's a, there's only the one green dot, and I'm trying to figure out what kind.
If you can, this will probably help you better, if you want to come up and look at this. So these will all be facing east, there'll be a driveway, and then it comes around here, and then that house will be facing east as well. It'll just, it'll just curl a little bit in front of us.
But it'll look more like the regular lot, but it's to being on a paint handle, it has a lot of road frontage.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, that was the only reason I asked your question.
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, let me show, this will make, actually, help you a little bit more, all they did was widen, the change, he was explaining, see, oh, it's wider than I just showed you, the front of it, that little arm right there, that's the, that's the difference. The county changed, the regulation, but everything else is the same, they're all going to be facing east.
And they'll have the same setbacks as the regular lots with. And they'll have the same setbacks as the regular lots, but the county lot would have different setbacks. It would be a
Okay, so that kind of goes with my question. Do they know how much green space is going to be saved behind those homes?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet?
Yes.
Is the, the open space area, and within that space, there's a calculation for the number of minimum vegetation requirements. So, when you come in and clear out what they consider invasive or not good in there, so if something comes out, so a hundred foot will be one of the things that people comes out of that space, then this thing will be, so if there's a hundred foot of width for a lot, is what the standard space is for. So, every hundred foot, there's an expectation of trees. So if there's existing trees, which say there's a maple tree in that space, that is a big maple tree, wholly on that property, it may take all the credit it's there. There may be another spot where there's nothing, and that will get full trees. So there'll be a back and forth. But ultimately, the expectation is that this is going to fill in space with what would be perpetual vegetation, so that you'll have a buffer.
So, in that, that will only go back to fifteen feet from the line?
Fifteen feet from the line will be homeowner's association open space. So, all common boundary with Richard Brun, fifteen feet, that's the deal with the HOA. If it's sixteen feet, then you start dealing with primary areas.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't, it wasn't a public case. We didn't legislate, we're good. Yeah, we didn't have to. We're good.
All right, Pete?
All of you, that's thanks for coming in. Please. Your wife. You live down there. And you're living down there, and you're working. And, uh, and then for, there's six of them. You wanted to cut the street for more, I'm, it's already on me. And you didn't want to take it off me, you just wanted to move it in differently. That wasn't one of the reasons I'm here. And I said, "The easel." And you said, "That easel." So what is the purpose of an easel? If they don't? And I was about to hear Mister Abenath, when you had, uh, Cameron, or Jack Cameron. He took this up to Mister Abenath. Mister Abenath, he told him to get off of it, had nothing to do with it. I don't know what the words are for that. But he, he told Cameron, oh, says, "Call him." Abenath called him. And he said, "Well, maybe there is something I can do." The next thing I know, Mister, uh, Cameron, he was gone, and one of you guys sat in for the trustee, I guess. Uh, 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 Mister. This young man, I sent him, I beat my dad the first day he was here. And I took him myself down to my house, and I showed him. And talked to him there. But I did, I told him, I said, "Don't let it take your job." I told him that. Well, whatever happened to Steve Kavanaugh, uh, Kavanaugh, Cal, Calvin, uh, I can't even.
Camden.
Camden, yeah. Whatever happened to him, I do not know. But I was told by, uh, the engineer, Pettit, Chuck Pettit. He told me, he said, "You get a hold of Mister Mudders." Well, going home, and I got home, all I needed to do was go to Walmart. We went to Walmart. Here comes him, Mister Mudders. And I talked to him about it. And buddy, he disappeared like a, I never seen him before. He got out of there evidently, but I've never seen him before. And this is, I guess, the first kind of scene you've seen, ain't it?
Well, I've seen you come in here quite a few times.
Well, yeah, I know you have quite a few times. I've been here a few times. But Steve, uh, Chuck Pettit told me to get off me.
All right.
What kind of a brawler is the engineer down? Chuck Pettit's, oh, is he a pretty good golfer?
I don't know.
Huh? I thought you golfing with. Well, his buddy's a golfing buddy. Yeah, the guy who built the house right next to him. One man. One of them trees fell off, he had a lot of them. I said, "Jim," I said, "Look, one of your trees broke off my door." He said, "My dad, said he, said I was there." He said, "When he comes back, we'll get help." But when he got back, his son was. Now, if that had anything to do with it, I don't know. But he took it all, I, I took it in the house right next to him. They hauled it out. And he said, "He couldn't get a hold of Mister Abenath." His dad worked for him. He did tell me that. What is that obstruction of justice? And he golfed a little bit, and I don't know. They closed the pond down. That pond, the guy tried to fill it in anyway. But evidently, he wanted to build back on the lot, back what lot he was. Only does. Boy, I know that hole is still there, with the big pond. It's about one side system, yeah. Mister Abenath, he put in on the two lots I know were up from me. How does it do the pond? Well, what's the difference in running that one line out of that tank? It does have, has some water in there to actuate. What's the difference in running that, and running the line into the creek of where the creek's supposed to be? I'm going to pull that old creek. And letting the waste go into the creek. That's what I've been trying to do. And I've been a fighter. And they have changed those ponds or whatever it is, in both of those tanks. I didn't know that. The guy who changed the life, I don't know where he did. And he said, and I told him, I showed him what I had, he couldn't believe it. Now, that hole, where, my neighbor now, they have them pipes running out. You got the pipes to come with you. I've got it, I hear about it, it don't have to be, I've got it. And builder of a lot, lot pages, for owners, when a builder of a lot owner takes title to the lot, entitled holder shall become responsible. And what this is saying now. Two, all of the roads have ditched. They, they, you know, it's, it is like, they've got me surrounded, buddy. I don't know. Number, the law owner that has a natural spray on his lot, will in any way change its residence. I'm kidding you. On it. It's, uh, right. And the skull, and the, uh, supposed to have three hundred feet of substance for each basement in a house. They didn't put them in there, Mister Abenath, he did. He put the tanks there, and there's a lot going right now, cut the lot, my lot, and it did hold the golden creek. And the guy who put it in, he didn't even station it. And I would cut it, a lot of people thought that was my lot, but it wasn't. I kept it cut and called the animals and things coming over on me, there were snakes. I've seen snakes in there five, six feet long. And, uh, anyway. That's, that's what I'm just putting up with. But the easel, it started, and you fellas pulled, I got it. Probably attorney. Attorted blood easel. Was it cut? It was a new tree. And they're supposed to go to, I got the book right here, I think it's out here, you know? Or the, uh, this is table two of the engineer's opinion of destruction costs somewhere. It'd go from one thirty-seven five to a hundred and forty-one thousand, to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And you got a story, or something you got here or that, I don't know, so did I copy it? I guess I'm just supposed to, did I ditch it out and go for it, huh? I was dishing it, but long. Can you, I don't care who takes it, I'm not a lawyer. And when I did get a hold of it, I was told by a little girl from the house. And then she went to my neighbors, because they'd already had, oh, they had a guy in there all this, uh, before, and it didn't work good. So, he made a, you know? Right here is the letter. And you can well see several pages of it. You probably seen that, I mean, I thought you may have, till you push out your cup. But it's been removed. It's left off clean. So I'm still fighting. I've been with the Walmart. I did hold one, and those are mine. I did that. And I'm back here, starting over again. So, I know I'm getting old, and you know it. You are too, huh? I know you simply don't, uh, Mister, that's an awful lot of it, but he's letting me down, I'll say it. I haven't known of it, but I have a few times. It must be with mother, you know? God, y'all, maybe, I, uh, a lot of stuff, I don't know. Uh, I, I know you couldn't take it off, too, today. 'Cause I hear, I knowed on this, for Mister Abenath. That's when Cameron, Jack Cameron, gave that to me. Were you quit? Were you guys fired?
He quit.
Huh?
He quit. He took the administrator's job at a different township. He was not fired, that's all public record.
No, I know, he ran a hurry. And he didn't want me to hurt it.
It had nothing to do with that.
Oh, no, wouldn't happen that good, when you wasn't in here. You were just in the mudsies, buddy.
Thank you, Mister Gibbs.
Huh?
Thank you.
I, I took you down, I picked you up out here and took you down. And I talked to Paul, and I didn't know that, he got upset.
I don't believe I got upset with him.
Well, don't tell me, you need to talk to Paul. Went back to your room, I guess. I've been trying that, and it's still a mess.
Yeah, it is.
It is a mess. And if you want to see some little things, I think I want to check in there, huh? And I said, a homeowner's lady was over there at the time. She go by, and she couldn't see no water on my side, on my side. And she showed it, and I've been driving always, and any of you guys can go down and see it right now. Yeah. We do have thirty-two. And I fell down, I told her, she had the first, uh, neighbor's foot, and she come over to me. I took her old shoulder where I go out at. She said, "Oh, my land, you're limited to get a hold of me." I did. Say, well, I heard you, the two, she did call me back. She wanted to call me back. And she said, "Mister Yew, I won't let your house know it, that is not my job." So, she left on that. The guy tried to build on that pond apart, or a pond where, well, he can do it. But it all comes down now on me. And I seen Mister Chuck Pettit walking with my neighbor across the other side. Her driveway is probably the, from where I was going. She'll talk. They cut a ditch from her driveway down to, uh, that of you. And now, some of that of you, and so forth. What did that do for them? They turned more order than on. And you don't just have that big pipe hole to use it. Usually, I thought you're going to find a fire station out of here. But it didn't work. I don't want a police station or a fire. Yeah. Always say, you fellas, stop the fire station. I'm told him, get a hold of the mayor. The mayor, I got a, that's all we are, no, we haven't around here. So anyway, I got a hold of him. He said, he get a hold of the partner. Whether he did or not, I don't know. Well, I don't know what he told. He said, "That, that's dirty." He said, "I'll get a hold of him." Well, the next thing I hear, that's when they're taking the fire department from here over off the, uh,
Okay, we're done. We, there was never any plans for the firehouse here. You now accuse me of doing something, apparently, I mean, you've gone around the room. I think, I think we're done.
I'm not, wait, I'm just telling you.
No, I think we're done.
And I told, well, you may be done, because that's what you did.
No, you, you come in, and, and we've been over this several times, and
You didn't do nothing to me, you don't want to be, that's just what all of them does. They don't want any weird.
That's fine.
Yeah. Has to be. Put up your writing day one day. I guess that's no good, but no wonder he, huh? So, the pond hits out, I got all these one, any of the fuck? You guys fuck these ponds up here? You run a line out and down, took them, uh, seven or three here, into the ditch? That goes down, that even come down on you. You don't even handle that, I don't think, on the farm, or even from the tree here. I don't think I just cut a pot there. So you figured out a way to dump it on? I don't know. I know you guys, like, I'm sure you've had a lot of, about it, for a while. But every day, you may not, it's funny square here, but you know, there's a higher power. A higher power, when he takes over, I'm here, and, uh, and a hell in the name of hell. What lie, you lie, and wrong. So, you're gonna have a good day. Sorry to took up your time. But you all know about it. But I invited all of you down, she wasn't here, uh, the municipal showed up, so you showed up, and I was, yeah, well, three of you just here now. And, uh, you may wanna honor the, uh, E. Don't you know, he had a picture here of one, that, hang on a minute. He said, uh, over there.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how you live with yourself. You're still here. I think we'll be right. I know, uh, I'm telling you. And I hope to give you a heart to the Lord, and I hope to bring glory on.
So just for the record, for the public, in case the public, we had a solution, we offered it, Mr. Davis, he said no. And that happened three years ago, four years ago? So, all of that, the risk of eternal damnation for all of us, we, uh, provided a solution, and he just said no to it. So, good.
You're the only one who didn't get it.
Yeah, you did, John O'Leary, one of them, he's dealing with it.
He didn't understand, I should.
Yeah, I agree, he's slender, so. Well, poor guy.
He's that skinny guy.
Where's that fat guy?
Anyway, I just wanted, for the public, for the board.
And I, and I was, I wanted to say that, but it was just part of another argument.
I said, when I, so I waited till he left, because
But I'm, but I'm not, but I'm not going to sit and let, he insulted everybody in the room, and there's no call for that. Number one, and he's not gonna tell me about my faith in God either, so, we'll move on with the meeting.
Anyway, thank you.
No call for that.
Thank you, boy.
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor ever contacted?
Is there any other? Cause the mayor is property for me. Make sure Mr. Holtrey gets down to meet you.
Yeah, oh, first thing.
First thing.
First thing, open up a lunch.
Well played, well played.
Make sure he wants to see this video. Okay. Fiscal business, Russell?
Yes, sir. Back to business of the township. Let's see, we have a, the first resolution we have before you tonight is the second reading of the twenty twenty-six permanent appropriations. We made some adjustments, uh, to it from the first reading, and everything is solid now, so we think we're ready with the numbers that you see in the legislation, and it's here for your action this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve fifty-six twenty-six? Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And then the second resolution, this is all part of the, there's two segments to this one, but the resolution fifty-six thirty is a supplemental appropriation for the twenty twenty-five budget. Basically, there's two parts to this, one is to enable us to make our payment from the general fund to the fire fund because of the co-termist agreement. And I didn't have enough authority to be able to make that transfer, so this is a supplemental appropriation that does that. In addition, we had a twelve percent increase in our workers' comp that, uh, we didn't find out about until just a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, due to the fact that fire has such a big budget, we had to allocate another twenty-eight thousand dollars for workers' comp, for them. The other funds that we have, they're smaller, and we have a few people in the pieces, so we're able to adjust those monies to meet that authority that's necessary for that. So those two items are ready for your action on the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay. Any, any questions for Russell about fifty-six thirty? Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And the final option, or final resolution tonight is the, uh, actual transfer that authorizes the transfer from the general fund to the fire fund. This is the part of the co-termist agreement where the city of Springboro is agreeing to pay a portion of the construction costs for Station Twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-six thirty-four? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And that's it for me tonight, sir.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
I'm a little sick, uh, Mr. Wade.
Okay. New business, we have resolution authorizing the township administrator to incur obligations greater than ten thousand dollars on behalf of the township and the Spencer, the second.
So yes, there are two items on the incur obligations, one of which is going to seem familiar to you, if it was actually presented to the board back in May. It's actually a reconsideration of that, and a decrease in the cost of the maintenance agreement with strike of corporation for our heart monitors and, uh, security devices, and I'm gonna let Steve talk to that briefly.
Sure, we brought it to the board for approval pending legal review, um, that process took longer than normal, so by the time we got that done, it was towards the end of the year, so we just kicked it over to next year and then renegotiated, so the contract will actually go into effect in January twenty-six. So we didn't have to pay that amount this year.
And the second recommendation in that resolution is to purchase the additional security surveillance cameras at Patricia Allen Park, and that's to come out of the local funds and place part. Police action, and they're, they're desire to keep up security.
Good job. Second. Okay, is there a motion to approve fifty-six thirty-two?
So moved. Second. Mr. Muersfall. Yeah. Mr. Gabbard. Yeah. Mr. Wade. Yeah.
Okay, police department, I have a recommendation to authorize a hiring of up to four patrol officers a promotional process to backfill one sergeant position, and a promotional process to add one operations lieutenant for appointments in twenty twenty-six.
So the police department is grateful for the public passing our levy, showing us, uh, consideration on that and trustfulness with that. Uh, we did make some promises as we sold that levy, and this is the process to begin, or to be honest, promises, give me a little head start going into twenty-six, and try to find manpower, as you know, uh, have difficulty finding manpower in, uh, police and fire, so I just try to get a head start on the promises, make the testing processes in place to start looking for failure of what we promised for that levy.
Is there a recommendation to, a motion to authorize the chief to attempt to hire these people he needs?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Good luck with that. And planning and zoning, recommendation to make a conditional offer to raise unemployment to hand the, uh, hack one? Hand one? As a part-time code enforcement officer, and all your rights, and all his protective, unacceptable completion of postoffer pre-employment.
You went through the process, the certain, I have experience from setting up catering and code enforcement. I'm impressed with that, too. Looking forward to seeing how testing goes. And being on that.
How many hours do I need to work in?
Uh, twenty-four.
Is there a motion to authorize Jeff to make the conditional offer?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you.
Higher District, I have a recommendation to accept a generous donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from the track supply company, foundation, and to benefit fire. Is there a motion to accept this donation?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And we have a recommendation to accept a grant award of two thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents from the Higher Department of Public Safety, the MS Division for Training and Footwear.
Are there any new grants we could give?
A motion to accept this grant.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Nothing to like, sir.
He's dead, yeah. I wanted to pull you in and, and get you to say, well, see, we would have put a ditch in for you.
I wanted to say something, but I did my time.
Yeah, my, I just, I go.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, my. Okay. Anybody have any, uh, comments to make about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Staff updates.
Still working hard on a number of different things, a number of different areas, but nothing, it's not there anymore.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Muersfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wade.
Yeah.